We can get this council.
I can just barely hear you, Mayor.
I think you'd like me to read the roll.
Can everyone hear me?
There we go.
Hi, Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Bowzen. Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Amos. I see him. Muted still, Mr. Amos.
This is the way that we like him.
I'm here.
He can't say anything.
Here. Mr. Foyce. Mr. Greider.
Here.
Mrs. Juin.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
The motion has been made with second, all in favor.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. I'm hoping, Chief Fitzgerald, are you on or there?
I'm on.
John, all right. Today's work session will be regarding policies within the police department. As we know, they've been busy, a lot of changes around the country. But the chief has done an amazing job. And I asked the council in early June to give him an opportunity before we move to the next phase and wrap these around council ordinance. So council, thank you for your patience. But we do have this ordinance on here. Chief, before, I think folks can see the 14 items on here. Do you want to touch on those items and give the council a sense of where these things are coming from? Again, I know you did on the 27th, or at least part of them. But you want to touch on those 14 items and give us an update?
I sure will. What I'll do is not read the 14 items per se, but tell you in the context of things that we've done so far to explain how we've addressed them. The first thing on the list would be how we're inviting community stakeholders to become a part of the police, or I should say, the chief's policy and disciplinary review board. So I've been working with Black Hawk County Sheriff's Office along with Cedar Falls to create a countywide board. Mrs. Juon has been instrumental in setting up meetings in that regard. But we'll be doing the same thing for the actual city of Waterloo. So irrespective of a board that would be county-wise, we would be doing the same for the city of Waterloo. And Major Leibold has been sending letters out to different community stakeholders that we want to be a part of this, to be able to contribute and give feedback on policies, procedures, and disciplinary review of items that have come before me as police chief. I think it's important to note that we're going to be inviting two to three high school students to be a part of the board, members of the Police Protective Association, religious leaders, just the gamut of stakeholders from the city. And the collective desire would be just to provide an additional means for the community to understand how complaints work, to be able to level complaints against the police department and have more than one option as far as filing. So right now, they can file online, in person. But I'd like them to be able to file through different bodies as well and not have to necessarily come to the police station to make out a complaint. Another thing is a change you may have already noticed. In some of the paperwork that I gave you during my last presentation, when we talked about racial profiling and bias-free policing, I've rewritten an entire directive on racial profiling and bias-free policing, including the submission of an end-of-year report every year to document racial profiling and racial profiling standards for our city. That's not a state requirement, but that is something that we will be cranking out basically every year from this point forward, describing situations in which we felt police officers did or did not have the right to stop folks and why. I've strengthened our in-car camera and body-worn camera policies. Body-worn camera activation is now mandatory. It was not mandatory in the past, it is now. And I'm working to integrate our body-worn cameras and our in-car videos with technology that activates when the officer leaves the police car. That was not a technological standard that we had at this point. But that is something moving forward that we're hopeful that by November we would be able to have up and running. When an officer exits the police car, we expect the body-worn camera to trigger. We expect that body-worn camera to also trigger at the point where they are around other police officers whose body cams are activated. So that's a real staunch difference from just an individual officer activating a body cam or in-car video capturing any kind of interaction between citizens and police officers. So the new technology really dictates, maybe I use dictate purposefully here, part of what we'll be able to do with the new technology is capture police reports through dictation. That's a huge, huge cost saver for us and time saver. We want to integrate the ability to pull statements off of video rather than having officers type statements into their computers. That should save us a tremendous amount of time and a tremendous amount of our resources. Crisis intervention has been at the tip and at the top of everyone's minds. People want to know what police departments are doing around the country to better serve all members of our community in a less than forceful manner. I've been working with Sheriff Tony Thompson in reference to creating crisis intervention teams that function on a countywide basis. Later on this evening, you'll see that Major Leibold will be presenting a proposed grant that we'd like to file for. And that would be able to provide a police car, a vehicle, for this unit to function. Beyond us training everyone in crisis intervention standards at the very basic level, every, you know, police officer within the city will be trained or we anticipate actually getting full training, and that's a 40-hour week's worth of training, to a large number of officers. And then out of that number of officers, add some officers to the group to work with Black Hawk County Sheriff's Department and potentially Cedar Falls to respond to crisis calls in a non-traditional law enforcement manner. We're making huge strides in getting this off the ground. But one step will be this evening, being able to provide them a vehicle, even if that is working just as City of Waterloo right now. The bottom line is we're putting ourselves in a position to move, whether the county or other agencies are able to do so at the same speed that we are not. We will move forward with it. The training has obviously begun. This week is the full eight-hour training class. However, the 40-hour trainings are coming. And that's when we'll have more specialized staff that are able to manage acute issues where people are in crisis. You know that we've been working with ICU in providing the training sessions and community listening sessions. ICU's been integral in providing the implicit bias and procedural justice training to all of our police officers. That's been something thanks to the CBE Group in large part for making that possible, us to be able to afford to put every officer through these trainings. It's really been, you know, of great note that major stakeholders in the Cedar Valley have stepped up to make it possible for us to expand our training offerings for our police officers. And that's going to translate into better crisis intervention services and better services overall and being able to interact with all members of our community. You also are aware that I rewrote, well, not rewrote, but wrote a policy on dealing with transgender individuals. We've also assigned an officer to work as our LGBTQIA+ liaison. We've really codified how we interact with folks that don't necessarily identify with a gender specificity that we may see them as. So it was very important to be able to delineate on paper what our expectations are as far as how police officers would move forward in treating people that don't appear to be a particular gender that the officer may or may not think that they are. It's very important that this handled with sensitivity and handled with just the proper amount of decorum. And if you don't have a policy in place and you don't have means by which we are able to gauge how our officers are treating folks, then we're leaving them out there, putting them in a position to fail. So you'll find that this policy really deals with not only the identification of folks, but how they're to be treated with decency and respect, of course, but what pronouns are to be used, what we should be doing as far as separating prisoners, and how we treat individuals that are in our custody and care. There's been massive use of force changes. It hasn't been without some bumps and bruises along the way. But each one of the major issues that you're seeing in the news today, dealing with use of force issues, the sanctity of life has been prioritized, not only our mission, but also within our use of force policy. We've required officers to de-escalate and they're providing de-escalation training to reinforce the need to not use a continuum of force, but to interact with people and to use whatever force is necessary just to bring that event to a conclusion. And by that, I mean, are we using the proper amount of force? Are we scaling and using a test of proportionality before we use force? In the past, there's been a rarely, a fairly stringent way that police departments have looked at use of force. They've used a continuum. And that continuum would be if that, then what, right? If someone uses a certain type of force, this is the force that we default to. We've moved to a critical or rational decision-making model, which sort of dictates that we have time, we have space, we have a lot of things to our advantage, and we don't need to create issues where we have to use force when we can scale back, reassess things, perhaps, bring in our crisis intervention unit or to bring in other stakeholders that are able to peaceably bring an incident to conclusion. So we've asked that our police officers, through policy now, acknowledge that they have other means by which to take someone into custody other than meeting somebody with the same force or more force than they are displaying. We've forbidden kettling for large crowds. We've gone into restricting chokeholds, strangleholds, and positional asphyxia. Carotid neck restraints are also prohibited. We've required officers to give verbal warnings when possible before using deadly force. We've limited officers in the way of shooting at moving vehicles unless the person or that vehicle is an absolute threat to that officer at that time. And perhaps the biggest change, again, would be the expectation that we are viewing and using things as far as force is concerned with the test of proportionality. All reasonable alternatives need to be exhausted before we result or resort to a use of deadly force. So one other big thing that's been at the top of people's, you know, at the tip of their tongues really for over the last few months has been the duty of police officers to intervene. We've reinforced within our use of force and our disciplinary policy that every officer has a duty to intervene if they see or if they are in the presence of an officer committing some kind of malfeasance or if an officer is breaking the rules or breaking policy. There is an absolute duty to intervene. A police officer is just that, a police officer, someone expected to uphold the law. So our expectation is that if an officer is going too far, if an officer has crossed the line between doing what is necessary or proportional to take someone into custody and have used, you know, and the use of force beyond what was necessary, then I expect another officer out there to intercede and to intervene. You'll notice that we've changed numerous other things. Our use of force policy is just one. The pursuit policy, we've changed, dictated that we do an annual, not only racial profiling report, as I spoke to earlier, but a use of force report at the end of the year. All of our complaints against police are now being handled and coded. Prior to my arrival here, we weren't necessarily capturing every complaint against police. Now, what you'll notice is that every complaint against police is given a number and it is being, they are being followed up on. In addition, you'll see on the website, we've added a commander complaint link. We will add that same commander complaint link and telephone numbers that link a person directly to Internal Affairs through our business cards. Our business cards are now being reprinted for each police officer. So instead of providing a business card that would just have a incident number and the officer's name, now our business cards will have a commander complaint section to it. And we'll really just lead people, not only by way of a link for an email, but we've, I'm working with Major Leibold to create a QR code for complaints against police as well. So we're really going to make it as easy as possible for folks to tell us when they're displeased and to tell us when they're pleased with us, because believe me, it's not always negative. The bottom line is we've been making some real strides. And, you know, some of those strides are actually being acknowledged by folks out in the community as well as some of the people that didn't feel comfortable with complaining in the past have come forward now and been able to complain and be able to have the confidence to know that we're going to follow up with an actual investigation. So my Internal Affairs staff of one have really been working over the last few months to handle the new influx of complaints against police that we're having. However, I'd say that that's a great sign, because a sign of confidence in a police department is when people feel as if they can complain and they feel as if they're being heard. There's several other things I could go into, but I'm sure some of the council members are going to have questions. I'd also like to bring up, another thing is we've created an app. It's called Atlas One. That app's available in the iTunes Store. It's also available in the Google Play Store. And it will allow us at every supervisory level within the department to communicate directly with citizens. So what you can do is put your address in or put your own virtual boundary in and be able to get instant messages regarding crimes that happen in your area. This is going to be huge, and it will work alongside our efforts to go into a more beat-based policing concept to, our expectation will be that our police officers now, working in the different beats, will not only go to the meetings within the beats and engage with folks, but also now send messages out just specific to the folks that want to hear about whatever's going on either citywide or just in their neighborhood. And they will be able to scale that information down and easily and quickly disseminate that information to folks in the city. So there are a lot of good things going on here, and I don't want to eat up all of the time, because I could certainly speak the rest of the evening. But I'd like to leave it open so that if any council persons or mayor, you have any questions, I could certainly follow up.
So just really quickly, before we move to council, just so I can get folks and have clarification, because we know a huge percentage of those that are in the county jails are dealing with some mental health issues. So the crisis intervention training, each officer is going to have some training in those areas. Plus, you're working with the county to make like this cross-group that will be able to respond, where you're able to find out that mental health issues or some type of other thing is taking place mental health-wise in those calls for service we receive or when we have to go out somewhere. Is that what I'm, is that what I'm understanding with number five?
You are. We are, we're having, again, this is, it's a fledgling stage with the county. However, we've really accelerated that process by providing the training directly to each and every police officer. Everyone from the top down in this organization will have basic crisis intervention training. I will, however, have a group of individuals, and eventually everyone will have the 40-hour school. That requires more of a financial investment on our part. But we will have a select group of folks go to the 40-hour school. And I anticipate having multiple people on each shift with the 40 hours of training. Now, that will be able to serve us well until we get the countywide crisis intervention team, for a lack of better way of putting it, up and running. My expectation is that we have officers, whether we move forward as a county or not, we have officers who are able to deliver crisis intervention types of soft skills in order to avoid us having to use force against individuals that are in crisis. So we're really rethinking and looking at even our average disturbance. If we have a disturbance where a person is acting out on the side of their home, Mayor, should we even go into that home? Should we, do we have a need to go in and put an officer in a position where perhaps they end up using force on someone that is just going through crisis in their home? Well, we have to rethink that. And what I am expecting is that the supervisors are out there and they're making the scenes and they're deciding, hey, is this a call where we need a traditional police response? Or is this a call where, again, we can get on the line, talk to one of our crisis intervention people, have one of our crisis folks arrive on location and potentially mitigate whatever problems going on there without having a traditional police response? So ultimately, a lot rests on the fact that we get all of our folks training. Another component that has to be that, moving forward, we have the cooperation of the county and other, you know, of our sister agencies out here that are able to, you know, put some manpower to this and to have a 24-hour day, a seven-day-a-week response. That's, that's beyond, again, just having a police officer out there that's, that's just got minimal training.
All right, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
So I want to start by thanking you and Chief Fitzgerald. I know that you all have put a lot of work clearly into this ordinance. And there are many things that I am very, very happy to see on racial profiling and bias-free policing. The LGBTQIA+ liaison was a big thing that I had wanted to see here in my time. There are a lot of very positive things in this ordinance. However, what, there is one thing that's missing from this that I think should be added as a tag-along resolution. And I know that this is not without some feelings on both sides, but I believe that we should also, along with this, adopt a resolution about the police patch. Now, I want to say that I believe that when this patch was adopted, that it was adopted with good intentions. I firmly believe that. However, I also know that it makes a significant portion of our population feel uncomfortable because of the association they have between that symbol and other symbols used by organizations that are not savory. I understand the history of the Griffin. I understand the history of the Ku Klux Klan. And I understand that those two symbols unfortunately have a close correlation. I do want to say this, that the patch does not bother me. But I, as a white man, do not get to tell African-Americans who live in Waterloo what can or cannot bother them. And I have heard overwhelmingly that this patch does not make them feel comfortable, that this patch has associations in this community going back for decades with just a lot of hurt feelings. And I firmly believe that in the 21st century, the symbols that our police officers wear should make all of our residents feel welcome and protected. And so I would ask, in addition to this ordinance, that there is a sister resolution that goes along with it, that we move to just having Waterloo Police Department and that a new patch will be developed as part of a rebranding effort that we are doing citywide. Thank you.
So, Mr. Greider, so for this ordinance, you're saying have a resolution on with regards to the changing of the patch? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I don't think that needs to be written into our book of laws. I do think it can be a resolution that is a companion alongside.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bowzen. And then we'll cut to you, Ms. Juin.
Okay. I just, I just had a couple of questions. And my first one is on your, on the chief's policy advisory board. Chief, do you have an idea how many stakeholders that you're going to have on this board? I notice you're reaching a broad swath of people.
Yes, that's, that's correct. In previous iterations of boards like this that I've had, I've had over 40 people. Obviously, I don't think we need 40 folks. I do think, however, we'd probably need more along the lines of 15 or 16 people. And that's inclusive of some high schoolers. I think it's very important that we have, you know, folks in maybe their junior year of high school represented on this board, as well as some folks in, you know, re-entering our, our community that have been arrested, people from social service agencies. So we've been reaching out to a wide swathe, as you put it, sir, of people. And our hope is to have a very diverse board and, you know, be able to glean some of the things that perhaps we need to do better. Hey, there's no panacea for being a perfect police department, I think nowadays. But one thing that we can do is listen to all of our stakeholders and incorporate that into what we're doing as an organization as well. So in addition to these boards and our participation in the boards, we will be bringing people in for focus groups for strategic planning purposes. I very much intend on putting a strategic plan together, and that may include, you know, upwards of 40 to 50 people. But for purposes of just the police chief's board in this particular limited scenario, yes, I would think about 15 or 16 people would be ideal.
I just find that sometimes when you have a really large board, you start hitting your 30, 40 people, sometimes things get muddied and it's tough to find consensus and to get things done. On the, on the Mr. Greider's subject of the patch and the patch makes people uncomfortable, I personally don't feel the council's purview. I think it should be up to you and the department, what you wear on your sleeve. I mean, the fact that an officer carries a gun makes some people uncomfortable, yet we're not going to tell them not to wear a gun or carry a gun. Have you had the opportunity, sir, are you still working on meeting all your people in your department? Or have you had the opportunity to interact with everyone yet?
I'm, I'd say about halfway through. I mean, I've met the vast majority of folks at this point. I do, however, you know, want to sit down in one-on-ones. What I've done in the last month or so was actually bring them in and have folks sit down, or whether you want to sit down for 15 minutes or a half hour or 45 minutes, but just to, you know, really hear from members of the organization. And I can tell you that one thing I've taken out of each one of those meetings is that we have some hard-working men and women here who want to very much do the right thing and want to be perceived the right way in this community. And I think we can go a long way in ensuring that our folks are being received properly. You know, how we do it collectively is going to be up to the council and Mayor and me. Obviously, I'm going to have to go out and be, you know, the change I like to see in the department as well. But I can tell you- the department as well, but I can tell you, sir, that you would be very proud of, of what we have working here and, and who we have wearing our shields and our patches. It's just a matter of everyone in the community seeing and understanding the great, you know, deal of caring and concern that our folks have for the community.
And, and I appreciate that, sir, because I, I did have the opportunity to work with each and every one in that department, and I can't, I can't be prouder for the work they do and how they represent this city on a daily basis, and thank you for all. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bowzen, Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah, um, please, she, I commend you for putting all this together, and I'm hearing so many good things about you reaching out in the community, and I, I thank you for that. With regard to what Mr. Greider was talking about, we've probably all heard a lot about the patch. I, I don't totally understand, nor was I exposed to some of the history of that, but there's a part of me that says, if anything is that offensive and that frightening and that concerning the fifteen percent of our population, why wouldn't we change it? With that said, I've talked to a lot of, of people that I, I really value, their friendships, that are members of the police department, who care very, very deeply about that patch. So, I know there's two sides of it. I'd like to have a, have that discussion, and different than Mr. Bowzen, I do think it's a city council position that we should take. I don't want to put you in the position of having to decide between the minority members of our community and your police officers. I think that puts you in an untenable position. So, with that said, I think it needs to start as the council and have that discussion and take action. So, I would ask for you to facilitate that discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Or, Mrs. Jewen, are you done?
No, just one more comment. It's a question on number nine, where it says restrict or prohibit chokeholds. Under what circumstances restrict acceptable? To me, they should just be prohibited, but I'm sure you know better. Is there a, a reason that we would have to restrict rather than prohibit a chokehold?
I, I don't see it as being too much of a difference. The, the bottom line really is, if, if an officer is fighting for their life on the side of a road at three in the morning and has to, you know, actually put their hands around someone's neck, I, I, again, I, we can, we cannot teach or train a chokehold. We do not teach or train chokeholds. That is not within our policy. So, that would be outside of our policy, but then you have to make a conscious decision when you're fighting for your life, and that would be the kind of example, I guess, I would be the best-case example that you'd use. If an officer's fighting for their life, would we, would we necessarily say that, you know, they shouldn't, or they wouldn't choke someone because of the fact that they were actually not able to get back up and maybe being attacked by multiple people? I mean, there, there's tons of scenarios where we would say, okay, it's not something we've taught as in a policy, but it's not going to be par for the course of normal duties within police work. You're not just, you don't just choke people, and, and that's, I think, where we're, we're getting at. In some policies across the country, ma'am, there have been, you know, provisions that allowed for neck restraints. We do not provide that. We don't teach that, and, nor will we. However, we don't teach an officer to, to hit a person with their radio, but if that's all they have in their hand, and, you know, they're being brutally attacked, I mean, again, we have to rethink our position. So, we, we can prohibit it. We can say that it is not something that we teach. It would certainly be nothing that we would ever teach or employ an officer, or ask an officer to use. However, there may be an incident where an officer would have to defend themselves, and in defending your life, I would think that, that we would have to look at it through that spectrum at that point, but for now, for purposes of this particular policy and procedure that we have in our organization, we do not teach it. We do not want officers using neck restraints. We do not want officers positionally asphyxying people, asphyxiating people, I should say, and, and we do not want them using carotid neck restraints.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, first of all, is this, um, what's in front of us, this ordinance language, is that's, is that what's going to be presented to the council in the future?
That is the prayer next week, because I know folks have been asking in the community.
As written?
Yeah, that's what I was going to bring forth to you, unless you've got something on here you want to talk about.
Well, there's a number of things, two pages where, as a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor. First of all, in one, six, dash, six, eight, dash, one, at the end of that sentence, it says, "are hereby expressly saved from repeal." I, I, my question is, what are you saying there? Are you saying that this cannot be repealed?
It's talking about the police department, isn't it? The work?
I, it's saying, one, dash, six, A, "All ordinance of the city creating, establishing, and structuring the police department not inconsistent with the provisions of this code are hereby expressly saved from repeal," because it includes the word structuring. And what's, and you, you have it in this ordinance, but at the same time, this ordinance is repealing a former ordinance. But, so what this, to me, is saying is that we're going to repeal the old one, but we're going to put language in here that doesn't allow this ordinance to be repealed.
Okay. What's your next one?
Uh, the next one is in one, dash, six, eight, three, um, uh, it, it talks about that, um, "The police department shall provide for the preservation of public peace and enforcement of all state laws, city ordinances." So, that means that there will be enforcement of the fireworks. That's a shall. Is that correct?
Where, uh, where's that, Mr. Morris?
One, dash, six, A, dash, three, the first sentence, "General department powers and duties. The police department shall provide for the preservation of public peace and enforcement of all state laws, city ordinances, and orders of the mayor." So, being as that our fireworks is a city ordinance, then that will be enforced.
Mr. Morris, um, the, the, the amount of pressure that council has been taking over making sure that we have non-bias policing, racial profiling, bias-free policing, crisis intervention for, uh, people that are in mental health situations, transgender, that's what people are talking about right now, so the fourteen-
And I'm getting to that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, I, I'm just going line by line through this, because you're asking us to next week approve all this. Language, correct? And I'm just saying there's, I have problems with some of this language. Okay, so, um, one, six, A, dash, three, um, uh, number one, seems awful broad and subject to subjective interpretation. And, and number two, uh, the terms that are used in there have not been defined, and there should be a definition of terms, such as what does unreasonable mean? What does searches mean? What does that entail? What does seizures mean? What does that entail? What's the definition of racial profiling? And what's the definition of bias-based policing? And then we go into one, dash, six, A, dash, four, and that is the mandatory policies. And, uh, the thing that bothers me and troubles me with this is that this stuff is not, uh, in any way, um, detailed, defined, and it's subject to a, uh, chief of police, uh, at any point in time, uh, creating other policies. Codification in an ordinance, if it's broad like this and not specifically defined, leaves for a, a broad interpretation, in my mind. Uh, as Sharon Jewen had said, or Councilwoman Jewen, the use of restrict needs to be, uh, I believe, eliminated. In number thirteen, uh, I'd like to know what, uh, it is that's being referred to there, defined, uh, and number fourteen, I believe, also needs to be defined. I want to mention that, uh, some of us have put together, um, number one, an eight-page document that's, that we're going, that I'm going to give to, uh, uh, Clerk Felkley, called the Waterloo Human Safety and Justice Ordinance. It's eight pages, and I'll be giving that to her so that we can have a work session on that. Also, there will be four, uh, resolutions that will be submitted. One of them deals with, um, Waterloo Police accepting military-grade equipment, vehicles, et cetera. One will be, uh, facial recognition analysis, a ban on that, and one will be, uh, resolution on, uh, banning the use of any type of, uh, some types of, uh, like tear gas and that against protesters. And then finally, there'll be a resolution, you know, in front of the council, which I'll get to, all, all these to City Clerk Felkley on, uh, the changing of the Griffin, and for the council's, um, viewing, I will show them something, if you can see this. Number one, this is something that was a part of a KKK, a Grand Dragon ensign, okay? Um, and this also is a KKK outfit that has a Griffin look-alike on it, and this is the Grand Dragon of the Ku Klux Klan's uniform. And this is one of the leaders in nineteen, late nineteen-sixties, walking down the street, and his uniform in plain view has a symbol which very, very much looks like the Griffin. These are examples of reasons why that Griffin needs to go from not just police cars, but also from, uh, uniforms, and, and not be, uh, in any way, uh, put on anything associated with the, uh, city of Waterloo and our peace officers. I very much appreciate Chief Fitzgerald and what he's doing and what you've done here, but definitely changes need to be made, but the, this ordinance as written is incomplete, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be, uh, presenting these to, uh, City Clerk Felkley, as well as language on an ordinance codifying, uh, the, uh, racial equity and social justice toolkit, and those I will get to Ms. Felkley on Wednesday, and I believe that your ordinance needs to be put on hold until such time as we can discuss all of these other things in connection with, uh, oh, the issues that have been brought to our attention, especially so, uh, since the end of May this year, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Morrissey, and I don't know if you heard, uh, Councilman Greider, just stated that he wants a resolution, but I guess, and I heard Mrs. Jewen, so, instead of going back and forth, um, right now, uh, there is a resolution, well, an ask, and I need some consensus from council. I've heard from, uh, Councilman Greider and Mrs. Jewen about moving forward with the resolution. Is there any other support from councils, individuals? I think I know where Mr. Bowzen, maybe stand, maybe not, uh, but, I don't know, or, uh?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I support, uh, Chief Fitzgerald's plan here. I support it completely, and as far as the Griffin goes, um, there was never any intention for that Griffin to be considered a racial signal, and I believe that in the interest of, um, being peaceable, respectful people, we can follow the path that Chief Fitzgerald is laying out, which is phasing something out so that no particular side is egregiously harmed in a sudden manner. The police have great respect for that sign, and we have to honor that the intent was pure and that the intent remains pure, and I believe we have to trust the administrator that we hired. He's an extremely capable man, very talented, and I think it's, I think frankly, it's insulting to bring this up, especially with this particular police chief. He's sensitive to all these issues.
And Mrs. Klein, uh, as far as the ordinance, um, where you stand on?
I support that.
Mr. Hayman.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, just wanted to say, chief, how you doing? Haven't had a chance to talk with you yet, but, um, for me, you know, looking at this ordinance, looking at the things, I'm one of those council members that has been working with Councilman Greider and Councilman Morrissey. I firmly look at these things, what's going on, and we're all on the same page here. You know, there, I'm hearing language needs to be explained more so, there's, there's other things out there that need to happen, but as far as this particular ordinance and the way that it is written, I think it is going to do our community so much good as it is. Yes, there may be other things that we need to do, but this particular ordinance is something that will address a lot of the issues in our community that are going on and happening. As far as the patch, for me, the patch, you know, as a kid growing up in this community, never had an impact on me, and I can tell you other stories with older folks that I have talked to where they don't relate to it, but I do know that there are members in our community that have issues with it, and I think we need to look at it and address it. I'm of a mind to where, let's go ahead and that patch doesn't go away. It stays in people's mind, I understand that, but we need to, as a community, as council people, get past these things as far as patches that have been here for fifty-six years. It's not working on the issues that are relevant, and I understand that patch is relevant. I'm not saying that it's not, but I truly feel like that is something that is so easy to take care of. You know, i- it's not a big issue, really. So, let's, let's move forward. This, I, I'm in full support of what I have sitting here in front of me.
All right. Mr. Foyce, we gotta keep going. Mr. Foyce?
Uh, so, I, you know, I think the ordinance is, is well-written. I, I, I do agree that perhaps we need some more explanation on things. Not having any idea, you know, what my fellow council persons have written, I don't know if there's overlap with some of the things that they, that, that, you know, that the chief has worked on along with you, um, or not. And, and as far as the patch, um, I, you know, I'm, I'm a white male, and I don't, I don't, frankly, I, I believe maybe we do need to have a resolution. You know, I'm in agreement with, uh, Mr. Greider, and, uh, I, I don't get to tell other people how they feel about it and, and seeing and listening to, uh, residents a- about this, and I know it seems insignificant, but the, but what it invokes and, and the feelings it invokes for many residents here, um, I, I can't, I would never, ever begin to understand, so I, I think maybe having that resolution would be a smart thing to do.
All right. All right. Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one quick question? I, I would support this, um, ordinance if Mr. Morrissey brought up a good point under one, six, A, one, when it says, "saved from repeal." Could Mr. Peterson tell me, does that mean this ordinance could never be repealed? Is Mr. Peterson?
Is this, is this the original language from?
Yeah, I can address that. I can address that.
Okay.
So, this ordinance, since it's amending the bulk of, um, uh, one, six, A- Um, so this ordinance, since it's amending the bulk of, um, uh, one six A, the, um, article that talks about the entire structure of the police department, that's why one six A one was put in there, because the whole entire ordinance is basically rewriting how the police department is structured except for one six A one. One six A one is currently in our city code with that exact same language, so it wouldn't be changing. It would be going back to the exact way it is.
So we could repeal, we could pass this tonight, and then after hearing Mr. Morrissey's recommendations, we could appeal this to modify it, to incorporate Mr. Morrissey's-
If it bothers, if having one six A one included bothers council that much, we can completely take that out. It's more or less just for consistency of seeing how the chapter is structured, and it's staying within the spirit of what's written in the code currently. But if council wants one six A one removed, that's an easy change to make.
Okay. And wouldn't affect anything else significantly?
Correct.
Yeah, it's written into the code. Really quickly, 'cause we gotta close this out, uh, Chief, uh, the, what's up here? Do you see the portion in here about non-biased policing or something in here that? I don't see, uh, my, uh, Mr. Peterson, is that in, in what we're looking at? Where's those, where's that section at?
You referring to the section that, uh, one six A... I think it was one six A three, and that wasn't, wasn't that your concern, Mr. Morrissey? The department shall provide for preservation of peace and-
Well, what is non, what is racial profiling? What is bias-based policing? What, what are they?
Well, a- again, the, you know, some excerpts directly from the policy were integrated into this, into this document. I would suggest that we put an appendix on here with the, with the policies.
Well, we could add a definition section to the ordinance.
Uh, because I think that would answer a lot of Mr. Morrissey's questions as well if he actually saw the, the policies that correspond with the transgender issues or bias-based policing or, you know, and once you see the amount of work that went into, uh, providing definitions for these things, uh, e- even the use of force, uh, policy, I think you'll see that the majority of things that you have some pause with are, are actually addressed.
Mr. Mayor?
So if you two can, uh, touch bases this week, Mr. Morrissey?
I just wanted to say that there's a difference between a policy and an ordinance. And codification of language that defines those, uh, makes it permanent, that is only changed by, uh, a council, uh, voting to change those. So there is a definite difference between, uh, and this is no disrespect for anybody that's on this call, uh, i- i- it's a difference between making a policy, uh, now and being able to change that policy because it's not codified. That's why I want that stuff codified, to make it more permanent, more lasting, and it has to be subject to changes approved by ci- city council.
All right. Thank you all. Uh, we need to, uh, close this and move to our finance meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Wish we made all a favor?
All right.
Thank you all.